I will ask if you could mute your phones or turn off your phones. We'll be getting started very soon and we welcome you all here tonight. That's our cue. We will call the meeting to order and we will first stand for our prayer followed by our pledge. Heavenly and gracious Father, we, we thank you for salvation and we thank you for your sacrifice that was made for us. And we pray that you will continue to bless this town and many gifts that you've given us through the place that we live and the people that we, we live next to and with. And we pray for our officers and our public works department, those who are out on the roads, keep them safe and protect them in this, this heat. And pray that as we consider items that are before us this evening, that we will consider them fairly and, and humbly and do what's best for our town and for all of the stakeholders. We thank you for putting us in this position, but may we not take it lightly and, and that we will do it well and for your glory most of all. And pray for our nation and pray for our world, that our leaders will lead in a way that is respectful of one another and that you will convict them to do so. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I said you didn't come get my chair, but you did.
Okay, our first public comment period is for any matter that you have to come before us about. I want to, I want to say because I suspect that most of you, if you do desire to speak, first of all, if you desire to speak, we ask that you get a form off the back and, and have it filled out and hand to our clerk for when you come. If you are here to speak about item number, item number six, I want to make sure I explain to you very well exactly what action we are responsible for, for taking. The language on this item, you'll see it says certificate of appropriateness. That is a very unique action. Most governments, the vast majority of local governments do not have this. What it is intended to do is for, for the petitioner to come before us to present to us what the actual desired development would be. We, our role is to... Our role is to say, does this appearance, things like brick color, lighting and on down the list, setbacks, whatever it may be, are they appropriate for the surrounding area? Now, meaning in, in matching and that kind of thing. It is not, is this use appropriate for that location? That's already determined by our zoning ordinance. That has nothing to do with it. It has nothing to do, we don't have the authority to take into consideration things like crime and traffic and anything like that. It's, that's simply not our authority tonight. For a certificate appropriateness, we're getting granular. We're looking at things, as I mentioned early, like colors and, and brick and that kind of thing. So you can comment about anything you want, but I just want to tell you that so you know what to present to us about your desires for this structure. So I hope I made it clear enough. Now, for public comment, it's not a time for question and answer. It's a time for you to express yourself. If you want to have questions answered, we're happy to stay until after the meeting or hopefully those questions get answered when the, the person applying for this gets up and makes his presentation. So I will now start that, the public comment period and I don't have any forms in front of me that have been provided upfront, but we welcome you to come forward at this time.
My first time here at the meeting. I'm always working on a Thursday. I just want to be clear. You said about color, brick, lighting and all that that we can discuss here tonight. Is that what you was talking about? That's it?
We will be discussing all of those issues.
Okay.
That's correct.
I can bring up lighting right now. I live right behind Publix or catty corner to the, the cleaners right there and I saw your plans, the drawings and everything. The hotel comes right behind our house, okay? The lights already at Publix are very bright. So now you're asking us to accept that this hotel comes here with more lights behind my house. Very bright, very bright. We already had people walking through our property from Publix, don't want it to happen with the hotels sitting there right behind our house. I don't think we'll have any privacy. Like I said, I looked at your plans, very nice, I think it's two stories or three, I'm not sure what it's going to be, but the, the problem is it's very close to our house with all the lights. I know you're going to put bright lights back there and it's just going to be too much. I mean, we already have the lights of Publix back there. It's just a lot, you know? We've been here 20 years with no problem, except for people walking behind our house, you know, taking shortcuts to Publix. Don't want that to happen with the hotel. I think I read you're going to have like 84 parking spaces? I'm not sure, but it's a lot. It's a lot right behind our house. There's at least three or four houses that are going to be affected. So consider the lighting. This is very bright and it's, it's a big hotel, you know? This town is a great town. I love being here, but that area is very small for this big project that you want to put there. So I'm just asking for you, the board, to consider that, consider our privacy. We love our home. We don't want to move, you know? The trees are there now, but come winter, all this light is going to be in our house. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it. And can you fill out a form and give it to our clerk?
I can fill out this.
You don't have to do it from up here. You can take it back. Thank you. And I want to ask the applicant if you, if you would do us a favor and answer some of these things for us.
Sorry.
You're on.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Washington and I also live in the Southampton subdivision and my desire for the appropriateness of this project is that, my desire is that it does not happen. And the reason why I say that is because it really doesn't matter to me that it's a true hotel by Hilton or whether it's the Rich Carlton, it's still a hotel at the front entrance of where I live. And I don't want to become home and, and see a hotel at my front entrance. And then if I choose to come in through the back entrance, I have 106 homes there. So there's traffic at my front entrance potentially and traffic at my rear entrance. So I'm going to keep my comments short. That's pretty much what I, I wanted to say, but Southampton, it appears, I love where I live, I love living in Tyrone, but the Southampton subdivision is being potentially bookended by a three-story, 90-plus-room hotel in the front and 106 homes in the rear with a traffic circle and commercial business, et cetera. So like I said, I don't know if it matters to any of you, but I, I love where I live, I love Tyrone, I love Southampton, but if this hotel project comes to fruition, unfortunately, my wife and I have already discussed potentially moving out of Tyrone and because of, of, of the bookend, traffic in the front and hotel and also the 106 homes in the rear. So that's my comments and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, evening. Behind time. I'm Tamaki Cosby and I'm basically echoing the same sentiments of the last two speakers. My family, we live in Southampton and when you think about appropriateness for a subdivision, now you have a hotel sitting in front of a subdivision. It, it's, it's like the true definition of insanity to me. And we're basically echoing the same sentiments. We'll, we'll be moving out because there is no appropriateness when you think about a hotel sitting in front of a family subdivision. No amount of brick fences, lighting makes sense. It's insanity.
All right. Next. Get a form. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Raymond Lindsay and I live in Southampton and I've been to all these meetings and whatnot and I guess it comes down to the bottom line, quality of life. Quality of life for the people who want to put this development there will be great for them. They're going to make money. Quality of life, wonderful. But for me, the quality of life won't be so great because first and foremost, it will definitely affect my property value. Everybody understands dollars and cents. This is not going to appreciate my home, it will depreciate. I don't know anybody up front here or anywhere in this room, a clean, the developer, who would want to buy a house, well, they tell me it's worth $500,000 now in their 20 years, but I don't see anybody wanting to buy a $500,000 house sitting behind a hotel. So it's going to come down to whose quality of life will be affected and whose quality of life will win out. So no matter how much words are spoken here today, the bottom line is going to come down to whose quality of life is more important. Thank you.
Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosalyn Horn and I too am a resident of Southampton. And I've been, also, I may have been maybe the fourth resident that moved into Southampton in 2002. My concern is the environmental impact. With 84 parking spaces, and I'm a project manager, with the stormwater runoff in that area, which we're already having some erosion issues in that, that little pond creek area. So have you all taken into consideration how that would impact the, the soil and the erosion in that area environmentally? That will have an adverse effect on us as we have been there for a number of years. We have not encountered any issues with, with, you know, vagrants. Well, we have had some issues lately with people standing on the corner and eating, dumping in that area, but we, we mainly are concerned with how that land is going to be used. If you started out initially with it being a extended stay hotel and then now I think they've converted it into something else, how do we know that it won't end up as an extended stay later on? I just don't feel like that. We, as homeowners in this area, we take pride in our community. We take pride in the fact that we live in a safe environment and we, we work together as homeowners to increase the value and work together to improve our community. And we would like to see it stay that way. We do not want a hotel in front of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next. All right. Hearing none, I'm going to ask, there's a motion to, for a motion to approve the agenda, but I'm, but I'm going to ask for item number four. If we can move that down into the new business section, it'll remain item number four, but I'd like to move that down. So can I get a motion with that change?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will now take up that item, which is the agreement with the entertainment company for Founder's Day, Saturday, October 5th, 2024. Who will be, are you going to present this item and let us know why we moved it? Let everybody know why we moved it.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have moved it initially due to the fact that the gentleman that runs the band, Rick Sanford, has declined to make any changes that Mrs. Cox, our lawyer, suggested. As of late this afternoon, he has agreed to meet all of her requests except for the deposit. He requests that we use the industry standard of 50%. And that is true. I have researched one of the biggest talent groups, Sam Hill, across the country. It's 50%. Every band I have had is a deposit of 50%.
What are we asking for?
It's either 10 or 20.
10%.
10.
Can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
In that email that's in our packet, the Ally's email?
Yes, sir.
All right, there, there are two that mention the deposit. There's, there's one that is the 10% or 50% deposit.
Yes.
There's another one about the reciprocality. Is that a word? It sounded good.
It is now.
It sounded good.
Okay.
It's not a word, it should be. The reciprocality of, of that, of the money. So you're referring to the percentage?
Yes, sir.
They, they agreed to the reciprocal.
Correct. It's $4,000 total and he would like 2,000 deposit.
You're right.
50%. Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, do y'all have any questions?
What were we asking before as a deposit?
10%.
Yes, sir.
Was there an issue with the refundability of that deposit as well? I mean, I'm trying to remember that.
It was.
I thought that was the reciprocal agreement, meaning...
Now it can be...
Meaning...
Excuse me.
They were saying that both parties had to agree on if the, if they had pulled out and we were saying that both, either way, it had, that was the case. You want me to read you that language?
As, as long as we're saying our deposit is refundable, is that what we're saying?
It is.
Okay. I mean, that was my concern was at one point, the language was the deposit was not refundable, but with the change, the deposit is refundable and they've agreed to that change.
Yes, sir. Within 30 days of the cancellation.
That's on page 32 of the packet. So essentially, the onus is on counsel to say, are you okay with the 50% deposit as opposed to the 10% deposit?
Yes, sir.
And to make it clear, they have agreed to all of our other conditions that previously were not agreed to.
That Mrs. Cox suggested, yes.
Thank you.
It makes sense to me that if they were going to do 10% and now they want to do 50%, why is that?
Well, it was our lawyers that said 10%.
We, we asked them to reduce it to 10 and they refused.
They started at 10.
Right.
That's what, that makes sense to me.
But I have never had a band that did not request, want 50%. It's just a industry standard.
Okay.
All right.
I make a motion to approve it, sorry, to, with the 50% deposit of $2,000 for a blast band for Founder's Day on October 5th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you.
Before, before I ask for discussion, counselor, have we made all of the, have we made the motion correctly to reflect what Ally's recommended changes on?
The motion is based upon the record presented, sodium which is all revisions tested by the town attorney have accepted except for the 50% deposit and I think that's...
All right, now, discussion?
Yes, um, so is this change just relating to this band or is this something that we're going to be looking at every time someone...
The 50%?
Yeah, the 50%.
Yes, sir. We'll look at it with every single band. There's nobody that's going to just take a 10% deposit, not when they have other opportunities for more.
I think he's saying, is this, is this a policy that we are adopting or is this something that we're dealing, we're, we're making a vote on regarding this particular contract?
As of now, I'm making a vote on.
On the contract.
Yes, sir.
So is there, I mean, is, is that something that we should be looking at because, I mean, on every consent agenda, we're going to get a different band who, who has a disagreement with the contract, well, with the percentage, not, not the rest of the contract? Because if one band seems to be able to accept the terms as we've laid out, but we're modifying just this one piece, is this something that we can put in place as kind of a standard for bands so that we don't have to change the percentage every single time?
Well, they're all so different. I would say that the, the, the thing that matters most is whether or not the deposit is refundable, not the, not the percentage. But if she's saying that the industry standard is 50%, I think going forward, if the contract presented says it's a 50% deposit, okay, we might be okay with that, but the next step is checking, is it refundable? If there's a cancellation, I think that's what we need to hinge it on. But to answer your question, like from a broad perspective, I mean, every contract, every time we hire a band or any, a vendor for anything, you know, we take it on a case by case basis and we send it to Mr. Davenport's office for review. So this is the first time we've had this much pushback. I was telling somebody earlier, you know, it, it, it used to be that we would get a contract, we would review it, we would send the requested changes and pretty much they were accepted. As of late, bands and other vendors that we're working with are, they're digging their heels in more often. And I don't know if it's because there's more opportunity now, that there's more competition and if we don't accept their terms, they can go to the next person, I don't know. But for whatever reason, vendors seem to be digging their heels in a little bit more. So...
I'm, I'm just thinking that Ally has spent, it sounds like she's spent some time working on these contract revisions to protect our town and then, but yet there's just some subtle differences that we've just agreed that it's okay as long as it's refundable, then maybe we should be thinking about making that modification in the future so that we keep up with the standard as it's, as it's going forward. That's just my thought.
Right. I think that would be assuming that we had a standard contract that we use for these types of things. And I think we've looked at that in the past and that's difficult to do because there you'll run into, you know, this band bids to do the work and they say, no, we're not using your contract, we have our own contract. And we've actually had that before. And they say, we're not going to adopt your contract, it's a nonstarter. So then we're back to Dennis reviewing the band's contract or the vendor's contract and us trying to make modifications of that rather than, I understand what you're saying. In a perfect world, we would have a standard contract.
Yeah, because I, I guess maybe I'm looking at it a little differently because if we have a standard contract and we just have it, they can choose to accept that or kickback. But it would be a lot easier if it was just there and then they can come in and say, oh, we, we will adopt your contract, because we, we're happy with what our attorneys have done for, to protect our town. And if we're happy with this one contract, if it could be blanket enough, it seems like that would be a, a quick way to expedite the process.
Let me just respond by saying that this is the first time we've had this level of pushback and we have required the same types of issues from all bands prior to this one. We don't have an issue if the town wants to increase the deposit as long as sufficient protections are in place. And I can make sure I pass that along to Ms. Cox so the next contract that comes has a deposit that's commensurate with the 50% and has adequate protections, we can put a note in there that the deposit appears high, however, it's consistent with, with past approvals and protections are in place. So we'll still give you the note so you can make that decision, but once you agree to do this one time, the next band's going to want the same thing and, and that's fine. We just make sure we have the protections in place so it's refundable if something occurs so that we're not stuck holding the bag with a 50% deposit and nothing in return.
And I'll just, not to butt in, with the DDA, I had this discussion. The more bands that the town or other town entities do business with, the more that we have contracts that have been reviewed. So if we do business with a band, this band again, we've already got a standard, essentially a standard contract because it's already been reviewed by our legal team. And that goes for any band that we've done business with in the past. We pull a previous contract, we take a look at it, we present that to them and say, this is our last contract, we change dates, numbers, and it requires much less of a review. And essentially, we have already a pre-baked contract with those vendors and we like to do repeat business and so that happens more and more as we do more business with, with different bands.
Okay.
There's a motion second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item, Ms. Baker.
Thank you. This item is for the renewal of the town hall admin, police and court and library copiers. The four-year lease expired in June and the new lease would be under state contract if approved. Currently staff was looking, is working with the same staff as in 2012, which were professional and prompt staff members. Both legal teams have discussed the agreement, and here we go again, and their recommendations were included in the packets. Staff recommends the approval of the 48-month lease and to include the legal recommendations. Now I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Davenport that could expand on what is in your packets.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. The item appears to be a fairly simple item to vote on. It's actually going to take four different votes in order to move forward on this item. You have in your packet multiple documents. If in fact you're, you take the recommendation from staff to go with a 48-month document, that 48-month document is a user agreement. There is a user agreement that has to be approved and there is a maintenance agreement separate from the user agreement to be approved. When we reviewed the user agreement, we noted seven areas of concern that we thought needed to be changed in the user agreement. The vendor then supplied a, an addendum to the user agreement, but they only addressed five of the seven concerns. Two concerns they did not address had to do with indemnification language, which we thought was too much for the town to absorb. They wanted the town to indemnify their actions unless they were grossly negligent. That's the standard typically reserved for fiduciaries, not people selling copiers and leasing copiers. That basically means if they make a mistake, we pay for it unless it's a gross negligence mistake and those are hard to come by. So we recommend that that gross negligence standard be reduced to a negligent standard in the indemnification. The other area of concern they did not agree to was they want to exercise self-help. In other words, if they believe we're not honoring the contract based upon the language in the contract, they want the authority to be able to come into town hall, take their copier and leave. And I don't think that's appropriate. They're not going to come into town hall and take... They're not gonna come into Town Hall and take their copier and leave. There's a remedy provision to exercise, and self-help should not be part of that remedy. Uh, so those two items, we believe, are part of the, uh, addendum. So you have two different addenda to the user agreement. One is theirs with five items addressed, the other is ours with all seven items addressed. As far as the maintenance agreement, we had two issues with the maintenance agreement. They produced an addendum to the maintenance agreement, only addressed one of those issues. The remaining issue was the same indemnification language that allowed them a standard of gross negligence, which again, we think is improper, and they should be only indemnified as to, uh, if they have any, if they have negligence, we will not indemnify them. It's, it's not gonna rise to the level of gross negligence. So the four action items to be taken this evening. One is if you want the forty-eight month lease, you'll need to vote to approve that. Two, if you want the maintenance agreement, you need to vote to approve that. Three, you need to choose between the addenda, either the one from the user, which addresses five of our seven concerns, or our addendum which addresses all seven concerns. Vote would be maintenance agreement. Theirs addresses one of the two concerns, ours addresses both concerns. Lot of information, lot, you know, in a very short period of time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wow.
Anyone? So the first item is to, a motion on the forty-eight month user agreement.
Yes, sir.
The second one would be?
Maintenance agreement.
Since those are a little more simple, can I, can we go ahead and entertain those two motions and then get to the addenda?
You may.
All right, is there a motion to approve the forty-eight month user agreement with, with Milner?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is there a motion to approve the, the maintenance agreement for the same term?
Moved.
Okay.
Have a moment.
Do we have to specify on which one?
The maintenance agreement is the foundational agreement.
Okay.
Then you'd look to the addendum to the maintenance agreement next.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So the motion is correct.
Correct.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, could I add one thing? As you go to select which addendum you want to approve for both the user agreement and the maintenance agreement, keep in mind the risk involved. If you opt to go with our recommendation, the risk is they won't sign it. And if they don't sign it, they'll probably sign it, but I can't sit here until they do. Because their addenda specifically excluded these areas, they did not want to agree to these areas.
Do you have any discussion with them about these five or seven addenda?
Myself and the executive salesperson have basically left this up to the attorneys. It's, it's out of our hands, basically, my contact.
Can you give me any feedback as to, hey, we're walking if y'all don't sign this, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, all right, so Counsel first needs to say, uh, one of, one of two. I make a motion to approve the addenda with fi, with the five points or the, the addenda with the seven points?
That's the user addenda, correct.
For, the, yes, that, the user addenda, the seven points being yours.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to one of those, uh, on one of those matters?
I make a motion to approve the user agreement with the addendum of seven of seven items as recommended by our attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fourth vote?
I make a motion to approve the maintenance agreement with two out of two as recommended by our town's attorney.
Right. No objection from our attorney, I, I will ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Fascinatingly easy.
Now the phone begins.
Okay, let's get to the, uh, popular item for the night. Let's try to make some progress here, make sure we can make as many people happy as possible and do the right thing at the same time. Uh, so the next item, Phillip, if you could, uh, brief us on, on this. If you wanna answer some of the questions that you heard from the public, you, uh, certainly can cuz I know that you've been involved in this, and, uh, or you can just leave it all on, uh, the petition.
Yes, sir, I can, uh, I can speak to that, and I apologize, our, our mic, I didn't charge it last time, so I'm up here. Um, I can address some of the, the questions from, uh, citizens just regarding, not necessarily this particular de, development, um, but regarding our development regulations as it pertains to hotels and how our development regulations address some of those, those concerns or some of those questions. I'll, uh, just introduce the item. Um, this is a consideration for certificate of appropriateness, architectural approval for applicant Steve Goulis for parcel number zero seven two six zero five one. This is a certificate of appropriateness application for a three-story, um, hotel. Um, it's presented not as an extended stay hotel, uh, just as a, a standard hotel. In regards to compatibility with the town's ordinance, um, again, the ordinance, relevant ordinance, um, items for this, uh, particular application are held mostly in our town center, I'm sorry, our Highway seventy-four gateway overlay. So that's where we have most of our architectural and design, site design, um, conditions and extra requirements. This property does fall within that area. So it does have, um, heightened requirements for, uh, architectural landscaping and site improvements. Uh, upon review, it is staff's determination that the proposed architectural, uh, plans are consistent with the town's overlay ordinance and its certificate of appropriateness requirements. The architectural renderings meet the minimum standards outlined by the quality growth overlay. The submission also meets the minimum requirements for a certificate of appropriateness architectural approval as outlined in section one oh nine dash eighty-four of the Land Development Code. It's also consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, which does allow C-one, C-two, CMU, um, and office institutional zoning classifications in this area. This property is already zoned, C-two highway commercial, uh, which has as part of its conditional uses hotels. And again, key word there is conditional. It's not a permitted use by right, it is, uh, has to meet other standards above and beyond even the overlay, which is, has, regulates architecture. I do wanna note that the certificate of appropriateness compliance does not serve as an approval for non-architectural or internal operation requirements of the hotel, those conditions that are in the C-two highway commercial, um, zoning classification for hotels. Uh, conditions relating to cooktop equipment, room stays, internal room lobby square footage, and other conditions and requirements must still be adhered to at the time of site plan and construction plan, uh, submission. This certificate of appropriateness also does not specify, um, or is not an approval of a specific brand or company associated with the hotel. Of course, um, the applicant does have a particular brand, um, notated in this submission. Um, we're just making clear about the scope as the mayor outlined at the beginning. Um, I do also want to note that this is not the, uh, end of the development process. So the property typically has to go through zoning first, this property's already zoned. It goes through, in this circumstance, uh, certificate of appropriateness approval. So, uh, basically architectural approval, which is where we're at now. And then the next step is to get site plan approval, that goes before planning commission. He has to provide us a full set of civil engineering plans. And those civil engineering plans need to reflect a number of items. In regards to the, uh, some of the comments made by, um, citizens, um, there were some questions regarding lighting. We very specifically for hotels require that all lighting is completely downward facing and shielded. So that is a requirement for hotels. This property also has a one hundred foot of required one hundred foot undisturbed forested buffer requirement. So the woods are not allowed to be, uh, disturbed for a hundred feet from the property line. Um, there's also roughly, varies in width, but between, uh, one hundred and two hundred and fifty roughly foot, uh, buffer that's owned, uh, as a part of the Southampton subdivision. So in grand total, that would be approximately anywhere between two hundred and three hundred and fifty feet of separation between homes. They are not allowed to cut in that area at all. So that does provide screening, um, as it impacts lighting, so that.
Good question about that real quick.
Yes, sir.
What is the buffer between the homes and Publix?
The buffer between the homes and Publix currently is an old buffer standard, but it's fifty, fifty feet of undisturbed buffer.
So the new standard?
Yes.
That you're talking about here is more than double what it is for the Publix.
That's correct. At the time that Publix was developed with Southampton, that was under, it's kind of complicated. It's known, what we call is a planned unit development, developed at one time, had a complex history on zoning back in the day. Since that time, the town has updated its ordinance and its buffer requirements and a lot of the conditions associated with not only hotel requirements, but just C-two development standards and buffer requirements in general, just commercial, adjoining residential, that's been increased. The standard buffer now for any use in C-two adjoining residential is seventy-five feet. That's the standard. Hotels are an additional twenty-five feet, um, and lighting is required to be completely downward facing and shielded, so.
So if there were some other type of development or other type of use, it could be twenty-five feet closer to the house?
Depending on what it is, yes. There are some uses that are considered more intense than others, they have associated conditions that address that. Some have a hundred foot buffer similar to hotels, some have seventy-five, which is the standard. No use is less than seventy-five feet.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, and in regards to environmental concerns, um, that just goes to the next step of any development process um, beyond the certificate of appropriateness approval, which is civil engineering review and planning commission review, um, bio-retention areas, stormwater management, erosion control and sedimentation plans, all of that needs to be provided, soil testing. Um, that's part of the engineering review process. So they do a lot of geotechnical work. As they go forward in that engineering review process, we identify environmental stormwater, um, erosion control, um, uh, issues at that time, and we also hold them and adhere them to, uh, very specific, not just town standards, uh, but state standards as well. The town standards are above and beyond the state standard in many ways. Um, that also goes for tree protection plan. Uh, they have to identify every single specimen tree on the property that is, uh, within a disturbance zone. Um, luckily, the hundred foot buffer really kind of captures almost all existing trees on the site, so, uh, we wouldn't really require any to be cut down. It also requires at that time a landscape plan, which we do actually have a standard for plantings and things of that nature. But that would be, um, that would be proposed during the site plan review process, so. Uh, that's staff's report unless you have any further questions.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, one, one of our citizens, uh, said that during the winter, the, the leaves come down. So that kind of minimizes the, the coverage with the, is part of our development plan? When they plant trees, are we looking at evergreen trees, things that will further shield them away?
That's certainly a consideration, um, as, you know, civil engineering, you know, goes forward. Um, planning commission would be taking a look at that landscape plan and asking about whether, you know, Leland Cypresses or other similar trees would be utilized in the back of the property. I will note, just given the configuration and the constraints, as the applicant has it presented here, but this is also, would be relevant for any future development simply because of the hundred foot buffer. There is no parking lot in the back, which is normally the largest source of lighting pollution. So, uh, that parking lot will be in the front similarly to Publix. There is no parking lot in the back. Any lighting that is in the back of the property, probably associated with, you know, maybe a patio area or something small, and again, would still need to be completely downward facing and, um, shielded.
Thank you.
And that's something that we can, we can talk to the, the developer about is the trees, the types of trees and that kind of thing?
Uh, we being the town, correct, yeah. Through planning commission and staff, um, we do. And at this, at this point in time as well, any considerations that you, uh, wanna put forward as, you know, a, a part of the approval process for the certificate of appropriateness? There is a conceptual landscape plan associated here in the.
Questions for Phillip? I, I have a question for you about the zoning aspect of this. Uh, because, uh, we, we still, we're still on this topic of whether it should, a hotel should be there or not. When was it decided that a hotel can be there?
It was before I came to the town, certainly. I, I, the last revision to C-two that I was aware of was two thousand eight, hotels were a part of the ordinance at that time. I'm sure that they were part of the C-two, in the C-two district prior to oh eight. Um, we did adopt in this past year extra conditions for hotels, but that, those are, though, that wasn't changing whether the use could be located in C-two or not, it was just imposing more stringent conditions. But the use could be allowed, I'm assuming, prior to two thousand eight or nine.
For me, too, so it was probably before the neighborhood was developed.
It was probably, so the development was a, the Publix, the, the commercial area and then, and the residential were part of the same development. So it's likely that the zoning goes all the way back to the genesis of this development itself. C-two highway commercial is, if you look at, you know, just in general, that is the most appropriate zoning classification for a hotel. So it makes sense that hotels were probably always included in there.
Okay, so the old United Community Bank and the CVS, all the way to the last house in the back, was, was approved all at the same time? And was that a matter of litigation? Okay, so counsel said no at that time, and they were sued. The court said, they have the right to do this, and that's how we got what we have today.
They, they were, this zoning was granted as a part of that process, correct? But all C-two highway commercial property has these same development permissions, conditions as well, development standards.
And if I may, Phillip, the, the, the term appropriateness, I think is what people, people get hung up on that. You know, this is an architectural review.
That is correct.
So speak just a little bit about the history. Where, where would you normally see a, a certificate of appropriateness? Cuz as the mayor has established, this is a very unique, um, regulation for, for towns, especially in this regard. So can you please just give some background on that?
So I'm not sure when the certificate of appropriateness provision was added into our ordinance. Uh, it has been there for quite some time prior to my arrival at the town. But typically, you'll see certificates of appropriateness with that particular language um, utilized in areas where there's a, uh, where there's a historic district that has, registered historic district with the state, that has very, very particular architectural design requirements, much more than what we currently have here. You know, we have, we have architectural standards in terms of percentage of, uh, certain materials and, you know, how often there needs to be relief on a particular wall, different things like that. But if we're talking about building something in an extremely specific style, such as a Georgian style or such as a Victorian style, certificates of appropriateness you'll find in Savannah, in Charleston, in maybe, uh, some old historic districts of Atlanta, just to kind of name a few. And the reason they use appropriateness is because the level of discretion is much higher because the specificity on what is required in those areas is very, very high. So if you are, and it can, and it can vary from property to property, right? So if you are in Savannah and you have a, a set of row homes that are all in a Victorian, you know, style, and there are some on the same street with, in a Georgian style, but somebody wants to reface a middle of one of their townhomes into a Georgian style as opposed to Victorian? opposed to Victorian, the architectural review board, the historic preservation committee could say, no, not for that particular row of homes, even though that's appropriate in the street. So it gets very, very specific, and I don't want to get too much more on that, but that's usually where you'll see that applied. More broadly, our architectural approvals, as opposed to certificates of appropriateness with that type of language. Architectural approvals are usually in areas where we have these types of standards, not whether or not the development or specifically, so specifically is the development appropriate for the area, but is the architecture consistent with our regulations? So does it meet the minimum percentages of premium materials that we require? Does it meet the color requirements that we require? Is it, from an architectural perspective, consistent with the surrounding buildings? Landscaping, is that appropriate per our ordinance requirements? So it really is much more of an architectural review than it is a use appropriateness, you know, determination.
Any else have any questions for Phillip?
I actually do. I want to echo what another citizen said, and what they spoke about future use, like what stop, what prevents a person from coming in, building what we, what we suggest according to the drawings that they submit, and then they decide later, somebody else comes in and wants to change that. What are some ways that the town protects that from happening, or what things that we have in place to keep that from happening?
So in this particular area, we're in, we're in what we call an overlay district, and we have the certificate of appropriateness slash architectural approval process. As it stands, what that means is anytime somebody comes to us for a development, such as the applicant before us tonight, he has a very specific development, very specific architectural renderings. If by some measure, you know, he decides not to pursue development or changes hands, and somebody else wants to come in and put in another C2 use, let's just say it's a pharmacy or they want to put in a restaurant, they would need to come back before, as the ordinance is currently written, they would need to come back before council to receive another architectural approval for that very specific building. Now, they may have, they, it may be a permitted use, so restaurants as an example would be a permitted use. There would be no extra conditions outside of the overlay requirements. So in that circumstance, they would be, they would be coming before you with a completely permitted use, not having to meet the supplemental, any supplemental conditions above and beyond what are considered standard for C2, and they would have, but they would still need to get architectural approval from you. So if this gets approved or denied tonight, what have you, if anything happens with the property, next, they'll need to go through this process.
All right.
In this, in the overlay, so any 800 feet within Highway 74, that's what is applied here.
I have a question for Phillip. Phillip, how can we as a town make sure that the hotel stays this hotel and it doesn't turn into an extended hotel in the future?
So we have, we have requirements, those conditions that I was mentioning earlier about how hotels are supposed to be configured. These are the conditions, not the overlay standard conditions, but the actual conditional use, conditions for hotels. And we do have conditions that no more than 30% of rooms can be used for stays beyond 30 days, and we don't allow at all stays beyond basically 60 days. You cannot have more than one 30-day stay within a 60-day period. So that really is kind of a maximum that we've established.
Excuse me, Phillip.
Yes, sir.
If we can keep the conversations down a little bit, it's distracting for everyone who's trying to listen to the speaker.
We've also established as a condition of development for hotels that any, any of those 30%, of those rooms that were just mentioned, that are used for stays over that, you know, particular period, they need to meet certain square footage requirements, so they need to be at least 500 square feet, which is fairly large for a hotel room. If that were the case, and this, let's just say this particular hotel was sold in terms of the brand, it would require obviously very, very extensive renovation process, but that renovation process would have to conform to the conditions that we've already set for hotels, be they extended stay or not. Those are just hotel conditions across the board.
How would, how would we as a town know that someone stayed longer than they were supposed to?
It's a matter of regulation. I mean, we, we have other reporting measures, things that we require from restaurants. As an example, we have, we have a requirement that no more than 51% of any sales at a particular restaurant can be alcohol, so we require reporting metrics as a part of their occupational tax process, they report that to D. We would probably require as a regulatory measure, similar reports of basically a printout, not of course of anybody's private information, but of reservations, length of stay, and that's, we would collect that on a regular basis as a measure, as a measure of compliance.
But again, this is not an application for an extended stay.
That, what is presented before you is a standard hotel, not, not presented as extended stay.
I'm just saying like 10 years down the road.
I think we're going to be, we're going to be able to ask Mr. Gullis some questions that will also address that, and that, that should also help us, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Gullis, I'm going to give you a chance to address some things that you've heard tonight. Again, keep it down, please. If you can't, you can excuse yourself. Go ahead.
Sir, Phillip, if you could go slide, slide a slide, I can talk intelligently about each of the subjects at hand as we go through the drawings. So this one, this, this is the front elevation and a rear elevation. So the front elevation is at, is one you see at the top. So it has some signature characteristics of a particular flag, true by Hilton, that Hilton has approved, and the canopy there is in the lower left-hand corner, and then there's some brand, some branding of pilasters and some color accent to give it some architectural interest. This will actually be the nicest true in the country for a number of reasons. One, it'll be 70, or 70% Class A materials, which is the glass and the brick. There's no other true that has 70, 70% on any of the sides of the, of the building. In this case, because of Tyrone's regulations, all four sides will have 70% Class A. So I live in a John Wieland subdivision, just like a lot of people behind me, and I've got, you know, brick on three sides and I've got hardy on the back, and some of the subdivisions, some of them are three sides, hardy and so forth. You won't get any of that here. This is all Class A materials on all four sides. And then the rear is the one at the bottom there, which is a combination of brick and ephes as well. So the colors you see there are from the shopping center. So the burnt red brick is the Publix brick, which I actually brought a sample of one that matches the Publix. You'll see some dark colors with it. And then the brown brick is meant to match, generally match the Niku Japanese restaurant, which they're very excited about, that restaurant's very excited about this hotel coming because it'll really help their business. But then there, then you have the white, which is like an off-white ephes. So the, the off-white ephes that's at Niku, we're matching that color for both the brick and the ephes. So there's, there's a lot more brick than a typical, typical hotel. And then even the sides, if you want to go to the next, next slide, have a lot more architectural interest than normal. Usually they're just kind of a bland ephes on the, on the side, but this is a kind of a composition, and my background's architecture, that's what I've done for a living. So it's burnt red brick and, and some ephes there as well. Next slide is similar to that, this being the, the right side. So that's the side that would be seen from the Carrierocks Road where people come in. Of course, there's a lot of, there's extensive landscaping along Carrierocks right now, and then there's more landscaping that we'll be putting in in the first 25 feet, so can you go to the site plan as well? Okay, so are you able to zoom in?
Zoomed out on me automatically for some reason.
Okay, so the typical prototype for a true by Hilton hotel is a 1.5 acre site, four-story building. This one's going to be a three-story building on 3.05 acres. There's a lot more green space here than your typical hotel. They, you have the 100-foot buffer that you all alluded to, it's kind of a double buffer. There's up to 450 feet worth of forest behind it as well, which is very unusual. But the hydrology study, when we first got involved to do this, we actually did a hydrology study because we didn't even know about the certificate appropriateness, we thought we were applying for the, the site plan and grading plan and so forth. So anyway, in our hydrology study, it was found that this site, and the other one on the other Carrierocks too, was designed to be 75% impervious. So impervious meaning the building, the paving, the sidewalks, the non-grass landscaping area. So we're actually probably less than 50% impervious here, so we're not even, because of the big buffer in the back, we're not even using it to its full potential hydrology wise. So there's a pond in the back, which is a common, common area pond that is shared by everybody, and any maintenance to that pond is, is a prorated calculation, Publix pays a certain amount, the hotel pays a certain amount, CVS, so forth. And now regarding the homes in the back, so I did some research because I was fortunate enough to be able to meet with the HOA board last night, so I had been addressing that for, shoot, probably a year, but we finally met last night, which was good. And while they're not necessarily thrilled about the hotel, I, I told them I would do some research on the, on the values. So the Fairfield Inn was the last hotel that was built around here, and I looked at the Preston Chase subdivision that's behind it, and those houses are selling up to like $341 per square foot. So you got like a 1,300 square foot house that's selling for like $433,000. I sent you that just before coming here, just so you could have some of that. And then behind the Hampton Inn in Fayetteville, there's really no buffer there. There's basically just, you know, probably 40 feet, 50 feet from, from the parking lot to where those, those, those small house lots start, and they're selling in the high 400s and Zillow's valuing, valuing them is as high as $500 and something thousand dollars right behind the, right behind the Hampton Inn, and I brought that with me as well, in case anybody want to see it, those maps with the dollar amounts. And then the Residence Inn that's being built right now, which is a four-story, all these are four stories basically, except for this is going to be three-story, but the Residence Inn is, been zoned that way. 2015 is when it got zoned for, to be a hotel, and those houses back there have stayed high valued. They're one, up to $1.4 million each house. So, and I really believe that those houses right behind there, even when the Residence Inn is finished being built, if somebody goes to sell them, they'll probably still sell for $1.4 million. There's no, fortunately, these are nice hotels, right? These are not Motel 6s and so forth, that probably helps too, but it's really an amenity that's nice to have. I mean, I, shoot, I had a graduation, relatives come in and they go stay at the Hampton Inn and the Holiday Inn and, and so forth, so it's.
That Residence Inn is, you talking about the one in Peachtree City that's an extended stay?
Yes. Yeah, right behind it, and there's no buffer, it's just, it's just a little bit of a green belt, and then there's the houses, and they're anywhere from 1.1 to 1.4 million dollars each behind there. It's Kedron Hills, it's an expensive subdivision, right, so. The, and, and they don't have 70% Class A on the back. It's going to be probably mostly ephes in the back and more easily seen. So this is, there's a lot of favorable characteristics to this site that a, a normal hotel doesn't have. And as far as lighting, you know, Phillip's right, yeah, there's no parking lot in the back. In the, in the Publix's case, there are parking lots back there, so there's asphalt paving behind the Publix, that's where the dumps, that's where the garbage trucks go and so forth. So there is, there is lights back there, they shine down instead, I mean, this is what it's supposed to be. But there is, there is a small buffer there, and the houses kind of, the way it, the way it was mapped out, kind of are more so behind the Publix than they are behind us. We've got a big detention pond behind us. This will really help the local restaurants too, so I know the Mexican restaurant owner, he's, he's, he's very interested, very interested in, in seeing this go. There, you know, as you have tourism, and there's a big soccer complex coming, so $200 million soccer complex being built right in the middle of Fayette County, it's not in any city, it's just in unincorporated Fayette County. All the cities will benefit from it. 27 national teams coming, they're, they're going to have an estimated 66,000 room nights per year just from the staff and the, and the teams. So they're going to be spread out amongst the, the different cities, hotels. And then the movie studios, of course, are, are growing, and then, and then this is kind of halfway between the interstate highway and some of the Peachtree City industry and so forth. And then you do have people that just need to, if their house floods or whatever, they can stay close to their house and, and while the insurance is fixing it up and so forth. So there is, there, no, there is, this does have less parking than what was originally intended. So originally, originally there was a plan called the Candler Plan, which was a similar footprint. This is a 13,000 square foot footprint for this building. Candler Plan was a big retail building that, I say big, it was like 13,000 square feet as well, but it had a lot more parking than this because retail requires a lot more parking. This is just, you know, one parking space per room, and from a traffic standpoint, for the most part, people come in here, they park, hopefully they go to Niku Restaurant, they hopefully, or maybe they drive across the street to Wings and Things or whatnot, but versus a retail restaurant, you have lots of trips. So in the civil engineering world, we look at how many trips, trips are being done, that's what generates a lot of traffic. We own the Holiday Inn Express in Fayetteville, we built it ground up, and for the most part, everybody's checked in by 10:00 PM at night. I mean, you know, the, even Fayetteville is still kind of a bedroom community, and you don't get people really checking in in the middle of the night, it's pretty, pretty darn quiet.
Can I ask, if you can allow council to ask questions, do you have any final points that you want to make before, since technically this is not a public hearing? If you could just, if you got some highlights you want to give us, and then I want to let council ask.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know this is considered, a lot of people consider this a big building, but in, in the data centers, for instance, they're going to be big buildings, that, this is relatively small compared to that. Those are 285,000 square feet, each two of them, this one footprint is just 13,000 square feet times, times three, basically, like 40,000 square feet. And I do want everybody to know that, you know, I mean, design is what I kind of cherish, that's kind of my, my background, so every, everything, I would, you know, suggest that I work with staff on any little nuances that are, that are there. And this also has no dead-end parking, so Hilton has higher standards than regular hotels. They will not allow you to just drive down and make three-point turns to get out and stuff like that, so it's, it's good quality characteristics, but I'll, I'll just wait for any questions.
Counsel. I don't think you addressed your assurances that this is not, will not, though we're all dead and gone, possibly then be an extended stay.
Yeah, I can assure that, and so here's the reason why. So in your all's latest ordinance, you all require 400 square feet rooms for two people, you, two people extended stays, you require 600 square feet for four-person extended stays. These rooms are about 300 square feet, which is your typical normal standard hotel room. So there's no place in these rooms to put a kitchen, in part because they're not big enough square footage wise to, to put a kitchen, so they, they cannot, they don't, they don't meet the qualifications for cooking. You have to have a certain square footage. So even though the ordinance would allow us to make up to 30% of the room for cooking, we wouldn't be able to get the room count that we need, you know, Hilton, Hilton, this is, the normal prototype is like 120 rooms, and, you know, we got permission to do 84 rooms here, which is going to be a smaller but richer looking true by Hilton. So there's, yeah, to Phillip's point, you'd have to gut the building in order to try to make bigger rooms, and then your room count will go way down and, and the hotel brands wouldn't let you do it anyway.
How long is your agreement with the brand?
The 20-year franchise agreement.
I have a question. So am I understanding you right, with our current ordinances and restrictions that were in place, when you applied this, for this particular brand, this will be the top quality true product in the nation? Did I hear you correctly?
I think everybody would agree with that, because there's no such thing as a 70% Class A true Hilton. The standard true Hilton is brick on the first floor, ephes on the next three floors above it. And so at the very best, that would be 20, you know, well, 25%, plus the glass counts is Class A too, so, but there's even less on the back. The back is pretty much just all ephes on a typical prototype. So you're, you're probably looking at like 25% Class A materials for a typical true, four-story true, and this one's 70% Class A. And this one's seventy percent Class A. And if you look at the color, you probably did some research, I imagine. So you'd see that there's some yellows and blues. So I had to talk, I had to go through a process to talk Hilton out of the yellows and blues. Because they said, you know, it needs to look like a True. So, you know, the pattern of the pileasters, that kind of rich architectural element there, we, I talked them into ditching the yellow, the yellow and the blue, yellow, blue and charcoal and using the earth colors of what's already in the shopping center, which is the burnt red, the brown, and then the off-white. So they agree that that looks good. The canopy, they would love for the canopy to at least be yellow and blue, to have some signature, hey, here's the entrance coming in. I told them that, you know, for now, the plans, I'm going to stick with the off-white and the charcoal so that it matches, you know, the element of what's in the brick and doesn't have the yellow and blue. The yellow and blue will be on the sign, of course, and it'll be on the building sign and the monument sign. They really would like for it to be at the canopy at the very least. But they were able to, they were willing to bend over backwards here. They'd like to see a True here with the, with the movie studios and the soccer. And, you know, the soccer's kind of elevated, elevated the interest here. So, and I know it looks like it's in city of Fayetteville. It's not. It's in unincorporated Fayetteville. Everybody should, everybody will be able to benefit. So, yes, it's definitely going to be the nicest-looking True.
And even though this is your product that you're bringing to the town, and we didn't solicit you to come here, you are giving us the best product that you can possibly give us because of our strict requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll have another public comment period later. And you can talk to us after the meeting. Or we'd be happy to answer your questions. Okay.
I have a question for staff.
All right. You can, you can have a seat, Mr. Gullis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've heard the applicant say on several times that this is a very unusual buffer between the back of this hotel and the neighborhood. Is it possible for you to pull up a map of any other hotel that abuts a neighborhood so that we can just see if this truly is a large buffer that's in between?
I can certainly try.
No pressure.
So there are obviously not a ton of hotels in Fayette County. But just kind of taking a look at a like-kind hotel. This is the villages at Lafayette in Fayetteville. This is the Hampton Inn that's there. In terms of, you know, the buffer between the property line, and I'll just go to their property line, that's eighty feet. And that is a wooded buffer. From their property line to, from property line to basically parking lot area, which is where what we would consider basically disturbed area, it's a hundred and eleven feet. Then from property line to the back of their building, about a hundred and ninety-four feet. That's just kind of giving you different, excuse me, different measurement amounts there just for your consideration. Of course, the parking lot being the disturbed area, that's where activity happens. That's usually where lighting is, you know, greatest and things of that nature. So.
And that has a rear parking lot too.
It does. It has, it has parking in both the front and the rear.
All right. Can we look at another one, please?
Another hotel?
Yes, that abuts a neighborhood.
In Fayette County, not this one. Okay. Taking some measurements of the Fairfield, I think they were. So the Fairfield Inn is here. There is a, there's a, there's an apartment complex that's right here. So from the back of the property to the, to that residential property line is eighty-five feet. It appears that that's not wooded at all. So, yeah, those are, those are apartments. Those are still residential use. From the, from the hotel itself, I guess if you're talking about through the apartments, I think the closest home there, that's maybe four hundred and fifty feet. That's from the building. This looks like a, maybe like a dog park area to the property line is about three hundred and ninety feet. So that's what we're looking at there in terms of buffer.
Yeah, the right, yeah.
I don't think the area is going to reflect that, but.
Okay.
Is the hotel behind the parking lot?
Yeah, that's squeezed in there.
Okay, so I'll just, we'll just assume that the hotel goes to the property line here, to the property line back here, two hundred and eighty feet. And then here, around, have a hundred-foot required buffer, so I'll draw that out. Put required buffer. And let me do this so I can. Of course, this is not a registered survey. Go. Measurement from, so I'll take a couple of measurements. So from the back of, from this hundred-foot buffer to this property here, two hundred and fifty feet to the property line. Then, and then it would increase from there. Sorry, it's not letting. And it would begin to increase, so we'll keep going. Two hundred and seventy feet.
Bill, if I'm not going to let the public speak, I can't let you speak.
Hundred and eighty feet. And then from here to the next homes here, it's five hundred-plus feet. So it, you know, it obviously changes a little bit. It changes a little bit as you go through, but it's fairly consistent. Again, the, the other, you know, hotels in the area definitely have shorter buffer requirements, and they do not require, as it appears in Peachtree City and in Fayetteville, they do not require them to be heavily wooded or heavily screened.
Okay.
Which is something that we still would require.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I'd like to ask Mr. Gullis a couple more questions. Can you commit to added evergreen installation at the front of the existing trees that might shed their leaves?
Like, if the question is, would we be willing to go inside the one hundred buffer, one hundred-foot buffer to make it more dense? Then we could selectively add trees in between there to make it more dense, if that's what your question is.
Find some way to get evergreens in there.
Right now, it's a mix of pine trees and oaks, so the pine trees are already evergreens.
Right. But it will, there will be leaves that fall in that buffer. It's a, it's a healthy buffer, I give you that. But they don't want to see, they don't want to see the building. We don't want them to have to see the building.
They would only need to make a brick.
Can you add, can you add evergreens in the event that it's approved? Can you add evergreens in there?
Yeah, we could add smaller greens. I don't think we'd want to, like, clear out forest in order to put evergreens, per se.
I'm not asking you to clear anything.
We don't want to clear nothing.
I don't want you to clear anything.
Yeah, we could, we can add smaller greens in there. Yes, sir.
And talk to us about, I don't know if this is a Phillip question or a you question. Talk to us about, though there's not pavement back there, talk to us about the lighting that will exist. Perfect.
So if, we're actually going to have a good example of this. But if anybody has been to Trilith, the streetlights they use in Trilith, they're downward-facing and they're shielded. They have a dome that comes over them. Lighting that's on a building would have to be what we, similar to what we call goose neck lighting, if you're familiar with that. So again, downward-facing, it has a dome. So the light is not allowed to really shine anywhere except in a downward trajectory, very unlike actually most streetlights. Most streetlights in neighborhoods and stuff, like the ones that we have out here, they're kind of a typical candle, you know, streetlight, and it shines out, down a little bit, and even up. That's what we're talking about in terms of what our ordinance would require from lighting.
Nothing will be pointed toward houses.
Not permitted to be pointed anywhere except downward and shielded. Correct, no floodlights. That's actually mostly universal requirement across the town. It's, you know, for any new development, is that it needs to be downward-facing.
If you are, you need to come to the mic.
I didn't provide a blow-up of this before, but the yellow is the common area. So your ordinance requires one thousand square feet of lobby slash exercise slash, you know, any amenities for the, for the guests. And because this is a True by Hilton, which is meant to have large socialization areas, it has four thousand square feet of that. So it's actually four times the amount. Not, not the case for some hotels, but this one it is. Basically, instead of larger rooms, it's larger social areas. And I brought a bunch of these copies that you all wanted to bring in. It's just a blow-up of what you already see there.
All right. Any other questions, counsel?
Just for the record, I would like Mr. Chokey to restate the current zoning allowance, what's allowed in this, in this area.
I can, she's just going to take me one, pull up the ordinance.
While he's doing that, just, just to be clear, the list he's going to read are allowances that don't require your approval. They may require a certificate of appropriateness, but they don't require your approval to exist because it's already zoned.
It's a, it's a long list, so bear with me. So these are, so it's split between two different types and classifications of uses, permitted and conditional. Conditional, I explained earlier about they require conditions. If you have a question about the conditions of any particular use that I list in that section, let me know, and I can go to the conditional use and pull up all the conditions. Permitted uses are all the permitted, all uses that are permitted in C1. And I, I can read those, but they're usually lighter commercial, above office, lighter commercial uses. So I'll go through the list. Aquariums, these are permitted, so no conditions other than the overlay. Aquariums, planetariums, botanical gardens, assembly halls, automobile equipment repair and installation, automobile broker, automobile claim adjuster, automobile convenience and gas services, automobile upholstery shops, bail bonding services, billiard and pool halls, blood banks, body art studios, building material dealers, interior and storage only, building material establishment, interior only, carpet and vinyl flooring stores, catalog and mail order stores, churches and other places of worship, comedy clubs, consumer electronic repair services, drive-in restaurants. Some of these might be a little old. So just, we did at one point in time have telegraph services, so. Dwellings as an accessory structure to be used for security purposes, fast food restaurants, flea markets, flooring stores, funeral homes, chapels, mortuaries and crematoriums, furniture upholstery stores, landscaping services, heating and air conditioning, supply stores, home appliance repair, home health, care services, hookah lounges, household and apparel sales and rental, HVAC plumbing and electrical contractors, indoor sports and recreation facilities, medical supply businesses, natural material dealers, interior only, sale only, nursing homes, package services, parcel and express services, playhouses, plumbing supply stores, radio and television broadcasting stations, excluding transmission towers, recording and development studios, service agencies, sign stores for printing and lettering purposes, swimming pool supply, cleaning and maintenance services, training and rehab services, upholstery and furniture services, and water softening services. Under the conditional use are, and I will note that just because they're permitted, there are still the overlay conditions. None of those uses as a part of the overlay can have exterior storage. They all still need to have downward lighting requirements, landscaping requirements, and they're all still held to a seventy-five-foot buffer requirement. So there are standard conditions that are present in all of those. Conditional uses, these are supplemental conditional uses for each one of these, animal hospitals and vet clinics, armored car services, ATMs, automobile repair, automobile sales, automobile service stations, automotive parking establishments, bed and breakfasts, car wash services, commercial motor vehicle repair, commercial motor vehicle sales, farmers markets, general building contractors, golf cart sales and services, golf or baseball driving ranges, gun shops, health clubs and day spas, hotels to include motels, lodging houses, inns and extended-stay hotels, laundry and dry cleaning establishments, including pickup stations, package plants and coin-operated facilities, marine sales parts, miniature golf courses, nursing homes, outdoor sports facilities, paint and glass wallpaper stores, par-three golf courses, plant nurseries, private or parochial schools, public utility facilities, retail automobile parts and tire stores, small engine sales and repair and tennis court clubs and facilities. Those are the conditional uses.
Thank you. I just wanted everyone to have the full, full scope of what is allowable and unconditional in this already-existing zoning.
Any further questions? And if anybody wishes to discuss, discuss the conditions associated with any of the conditional uses, I'm available to discuss that and point you in the right direction.
I will remind you that tonight, because there, someone is missing, our quorum rules require a unanimous vote. And so I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness presented by Mr. Steve Gullis for parcel number zero seven two six zero five one.
Second. Oh, second. Second. Are there questions before someone wants to make a second? Or does, do you want it to die and make a different motion?
No, I have a question. Because I know that we are approving the certificate of appropriateness based off of the architectural features that the applicant meets, which is the legal obligation. Just because the certificate of appropriateness is granted, there's still an entire process that the applicant has to go through before an actual hotel would be permitted to be built on this property. Is that correct? Okay, so there's a whole nother process that the applicant has to go through to meet the legal requirements in order for those things to happen. And so right now, all we're looking at is just the outside of the building.
The mic, just lean forward to the mic.
That one's not charged. It's my fault. I didn't charge it the last, the last time I used it. That, that is correct.
It's correct. And I know that's staff's recommendation that they've met those conditions, correct?
It is. It's staff's determination that this proposal meets. It is, it's staff's determination that this proposal meets the minimum requirements of the overlay. We did go back and forth with, as Mr. Goulas mentioned, regarding color, some of the pilaster panels and different other architectural elements that staff did require to be revised that were not in conformity, mostly regarding color. So in that staff review process, this is what was presented. It's now counsel's determination if, if it meets and is consistent with the architecture of the surrounding buildings and, and the overlay. So it's, it's both consistency with surrounding buildings and the overlay requirements. Those are the, those are the linchpin kind of standards for the architectural compliance out.
All right, we have a motion. You got, you got a different question?
So if, if this is, if this is not, if this certificate of appropriateness is not voted for tonight, does this mean this dies, or if we vote for the certificate appropriateness, this means he goes forward building this, but he has to go through the different stages with planning?
Counselor, can you address that, please?
Mike, I've got a walk up here. Right. This, this is, the certificate of appropriateness is a gatekeeping device. You can't get to the development stage without first getting the certificate. The certificate says you meet the minimum threshold to develop in this area that has a significantly greater number of architectural standards, as well as setback requirements, et cetera. If the demonstration before you convinces you that the applicant has met those minimum standards, it would be, pardon the use of the word, appropriate to go ahead and approve that. But all that does is allow the candidate for, you know, this development to move forward to step one, and to get with development regulations, to get site plans together, and all of the other process that all other developers enjoy without having to go through this process. This is a, a different process that you have for this specific geographic area of the town. Does that help?
If you go, can you stay there for a second?
I can.
If you go back to our last meeting, we had a very unpopular decision, but we also had the constitution and property rights. We had the law, which is what we swear an oath to, is that the same situation somewhat apply here.
The short answer is yes. I do want to expound upon it a bit, because I've said this before, I'll say it again. This certificate of appropriateness is, is, it's different. It's not something you normally see. When a developer comes into a city, a county, a town to work a development, you first have to make sure that you have the zoning district in place that's consistent with your development. Check, that's there. If that's the case, you start the process of developing. Here, no, not for this area. We've met the minimum standard of the zoning district being there, but now we've got to at least provide another level of comfort to the governing authority that what we intend to build is going to look in a way consistent with your expectations architecturally, building material wise, and blend in with what's already there. So it's not a question of can the applicant build this type of use? That question was answered when it was zoned. It can be built. It's a question of how do you want it to look? Does this look consistent with the regulations that you have in your code? If the answer to that question is yes, you should allow them to go forward and develop with our process. If the answer to that question is no, tell them what's wrong with it and have them come back with a, with a different set of drawings, et cetera, that better meets your certificate of appropriateness standards. That's where you are this evening.
All right, we have a motion on the table. If there are no more questions, then we'll ask for a second.
No, I'm, I'm on a second. I'm on a second, because it's the legal thing to do. That is correct thing to do.
Any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, a vote of three to nothing, it's, the certificate of appropriateness is approved. Now, you can come to us again, and you can beat us up. It's public comment period.
Can I say something to Mr. Goulas?
Before, before we, before we have our public comment period, you don't have to raise your hand. It's, it's the public comment period, so you can.
You had to fill out a form.
I'm gonna.
Thank you for these. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you're gonna speak, I need you at the mic.
Somebody can come up to the mic. I think one of the words that may have been left out is like technical review committee. So you all have departments. You have, you have Scott Langford for the, studying the storm hydrology, and Devant, I think, as well, if she's still here. And, and you have certain parking space widths, turning radiuses, all those kind of things still have to be studied to get the land disturbance permit. So this is just the first step. As long as it took to get here, it's still just the first step.
We are aware. We are all aware.
Counselor, we didn't make, as a part of that motion, we didn't make the agreement to put the evergreens on the back. Do we need to take a, have a separate motion, or is that just an agreement between him and staff?
The applicant is on the record of committing to do that. When you asked him specifically if he was going to do that, he said yes, he would. I think that's good enough as far as the record's concerned.
Okay. All right. Did you want to say something else?
No, I just was wanting to thank Mr. Goulas.
This is our second public comment period. You're welcome to come forward at any point once I'm finished talking. And you have three minutes to do so. Again, it's not question answer, but we will come forward after the meeting and, and answer any questions that you have, and try to do a better job of explaining it. So please state your name and address, and have a form filled out for our clerk as before. First.
My name is Talaqui Cosby. And me, I get the legal, the legal decision, but I also understand that, I work in Clayton County. I'm a educator in Clayton County, but I live at 406 Winfield Drive. And I moved to Tyrone for a reason. When I moved here after I graduated from college in 1998, I was a resident of Clayton County. I have not signed a contract, even though school has started for a reason. I've watched the great demise of Clayton County. I once remember Fabrin being an awesome place to live. We've all seen it. And there are some things in this world that money just cannot buy. But sometimes it seems like money can buy people. But money cannot buy peace. Money cannot buy loyalty, integrity. And, and I also see how Fayetteville is changing drastically. I watch, my daughter and I, she's 12, and she goes to Flat Rock. We were in Peach Street City about two months ago, and we watch four people fill their carts with merchandise. And before the workers and the manager could even get outside, they were gone. So sometimes you can see your own undoing right before your eyes. And I, and this is very unfortunate. I hope that this doesn't get approved, because who would want a hotel at their front door? That's again, like I said earlier, it's insanity. And it doesn't need to be extended stay. Sometimes you already know, if you have the spirit of discernment, you already know what the plans are. And I would have hoped that you all had the spirit of discernment. Because we, we see it, we know the changes that are gonna come. But you all will have to be ready for those changes. So expect to hire more police officers, more fire, safety, more, just expect to see a drastic change in your public service. And also expect to see your schools change, Sandy Creek, Flat Rock, Birch. I'm telling you what's coming. I know what's coming. I watched it unfold in Clayton County. I watched it unfold in Fabrin. We're watching it unfold in Fayetteville. We're watching it unfold in Peach Street City. There are some things that money just can't buy, and that's peace.
I would like to address her.
All right, one moment, please, sir.
Ms. Cosby? Yes, ma'am. I am Gloria Farr, and I have been on this council for 19 years. And I have never taken one red penny from anyone. And for you to insinuate that people can be bought, I took it personal. I have never taken a dime, not one cent, for political help in getting elected to this seat. And I have done my darndest to do what was right. And I think I did what was right tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Have no idea.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. We can all say that.
Yes, we can.
All right. Next, sir?
I already turned my forms, you man. Again, my name is Kenneth Washington. I am a Southampton resident. I will not regurgitate what I stated earlier. But I do want to say that all this sounds great to those who don't live in Southampton. So my point is, if you don't have any skin in the game, it's kind of a little bit easier to vote on and approve something like this. But for me, I can't speak to the rest of the Southampton residents, but for me, it's not about whether it's a true by Hilton, or whether it's a Ritz Carlton, or whether it's an extended stay, or whether it's a regular hotel. The bottom line is, at possibly at the front entrance of our subdivision, there'll be a hotel. And at the rear entrance of our subdivision, there's gonna be 106 houses. So we are booked in by nothing but traffic and people and et cetera. And I moved to Southampton and Tyrone for a reason, and that reason is getting thrown out the window. I love where I live. I love Southampton. I love Tyrone. But to have a hotel at the front entrance of my subdivision and 106 houses at the rear entrance is literally pushing me out. So that's my comment.
I'd be, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to speak with you after the meeting, if you don't mind. Yes, sir. If you will.
Right now on, on my street, there are little children walking to the bus stop, which is at the end of Village Green Circle. How are parents gonna, my son is graduated, but what about the parents that have their children walking, you know, to the bus stop? Okay? That's not gonna be safe for them anymore, walking to, to go to school, because there are prejudices, prejudices out here. And you never know. You, they're gonna come home, the moms and dads are gonna come home one day and say, well, where's my child? You know? They never made it to the bus stop. Consider that. Consider these kids walking to the bus stop, okay? Because you never know who's gonna be out there or be in these hotels watching your children. And like I said, mine graduated. I don't have to worry about him. But what about the others? That's all I have to say.
All right, next.
Good afternoon. I'm Kim Robinson of Southampton on Green Branch Drive. I'm trying to compose myself, because I'm very, what I'm hearing tonight is like something has already been approved, been done, and that we have said no, 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 to this situation, and it still keeps coming back up. We voted once not to have a hotel, twice, three times, many times. We have stated as a community, I've been in this community ever since the beginning of 2004. We bought, my husband and I bought the house brand new, had it built and everything. I even had dinner with you the first night that we was here, in the neighborhood, this firm. And we met at the little barber shop up there and had dinner. We love the neighborhood. We love the Mayberry feel. Now we go in like we're trying to be this big New York City or big Atlanta or something. That's not what we moved in this neighborhood for. We moved in this neighborhood to raise a decent family, not, who's gonna stay in this hotel? Who are we catering to? We're not catering to us. We have plenty of rooms in our houses. And we, we have neighbors that have plenty of rooms. Why do we need a hotel in the front of our neighborhood, that where our children are supposed to be playing? People like me that's get older, I can get around the neighborhood and stuff. Who are these people coming to this hotel? Tonight, I have sat back there, and I have listened to problems. I think so, maybe. Oh, yes, I can put a small evergreen tree there. Who, what is he gonna do? We've been going back and forth. You're gonna, am I gonna have to dig between the trees? Or do I put it on the edge? Oh, well, I do that, but we gonna go ahead and vote and make sure it's okay. But he said he'd do it, so therefore he gonna do it. Right then and there, it should have been a stop on the vote. It wasn't on black and white. It wasn't on paper. I don't, I'm sorry to get loud, but it's too many problems, I think, and I'm gonna do it. We want to save our neighborhood. We don't want all this to happen. And, and, and maybe I'm not understanding the process. I brought my grandson with me tonight, because I said, I want you to see. I want you to see the way it works. I want you to see the way we've been trying to do everything. And, and he's back there like, it become, when we go, when we get to say something, when we gonna do something? You know, I, I, I hear the people. I'm sorry. And I like, again, it's a very emotional subject.
And, and thank you, and I, and I wanna, I think I can, I'm not gonna make you happy, but I at least want to say this. A hotel was approved for that location 20-plus years ago, period. What we voted on tonight were the color of bricks, trying to get some trees to make sure the lighting wasn't pointing at the houses, those kinds of things. That's all we voted on tonight. A hotel was proved there before the neighborhood was there, before Publix was there, any of that. That's when, that's when, that's when they voted to, that's when they said a hotel can go there.
All I'm saying, sir, is when they sold the house, when we moved into the neighborhood, when I had my talk with Ms. Farr and everything, all of that, that wasn't ever disclosed. It wasn't ever disclosed.
It's, it's a zoning district. So that zoning district is what's, what was approved 20-plus years ago.
But haven't the zones been changed? I can't remember if it was you or who it was to say, it was what somebody said, well, it's been, it's probably back 18 years ago when it was. It's probably, it's probably in the books.
We know that it was at least 20 years ago.
But nobody hadn't produced that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right, next.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Susan Poole, and I live in Southampton as well. And only thing I have to say is that, as you sit up here and you make votes, and I understand that we just decided on the architectural piece tonight, but as we go forward in this process, ask yourself, would you want a hotel in the front of your resident to include you, sir? You live in Fayetteville. Is a hotel in front of your home, in front of your resident? No. And we wouldn't want it in our, in front of ours as well. But I'm saying to my fellow Southampton members, remember, our votes are important, on the local level, on the state level, and on the federal level. So we have these people sitting up before us right now. Remind your neighbors to get out and vote. That's how changes are made. That's how changes are made. This hotel may be approved and it may not be approved. It would take at least two to five to ten years to get this hotel approved. We have an election every year, every two years, and every four years. Get out and vote, people.
All right, next.
Hey, there.
Uh, yes, Eddie Martin. I live in Southampton also. Can't make everybody happy, you know? I'm, I'm okay with it, you know what I'm saying? Because we, we have to grow. We have to develop, we have to grow. Um, you said it's not gonna be an extended stay. We, we hope you keep, keep your word on that. And if you do, we hope the police would then police it, you know what I'm saying? And we just, we have to grow, you know what I'm saying? We need to, all this old, "We don't want this, we don't want that," but it's just a land, and it's just a block, area sitting there. Let's develop, let's, let's make it grow. Can't, can't, can't make everybody happy. Everybody don't agree. Like, I'm sitting here, and I hear people talking to me, I'm like, we all don't agree, everybody disagreeing, just, you know, have what they gotta say, but we have to just kind of talk it out and work it out. We have stages, and we get stages, and we just keep figuring it out till we get it right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, next.
Do you have a, do you have a form filled out?
Okay, Mr. Lindsay.
Hi. Once again, my name is Raymond Lindsay, and I live at, uh, Southampton.
One second. Can we do, uh, show him respect of listening to him speak, please?
And, uh, this is my second time up. What it is, is sometimes when someone presents something on paper, in reality, it's different. When I first moved to Southampton, my builders, from John Willen, told me I would have three hundred yards of buffer behind my house. I'm like, "My God, that's three football fields." I retired from my job in December of oh-two. I bought the house in October of oh-two, went back up to New York to finish my job out, telling everybody about my future home, my retirement home. Three hundred yards behind my house as a buffer zone. They're gonna build a Publix, Mr. Lindsay, but it'd be way down that way. When I came back in January of oh-three, all the trees were gone. My wife was like, "Don't worry, don't worry, they'll grow back." They took the trees from behind my house all the way to seventy-four, and Publix was right there behind my house. So, when they first built Publix, the downlighting, as they say, all night long shone into my home, all night long. So, what I'm saying is, what you propose on paper and what actually comes out in reality is two different things. When you build a hotel with all the amenities that you're saying, you still have no control over who comes and stays there. You can't tell this person they can't stay there, and this person, they can't stay there. So, what kind of individuals are you gonna attract into my community that I have to live in? And if this is approved, because I'm serious, if this is approved, how long will it take for this to be built? If it's approved and goes through, usually, how long does the whole process take for the breaking of ground? A year, two years? That's a question.
That's up to the developer.
Okay, because I'm saying, if it was approved, I just want to know how long it takes for the actual construction to start.
It's, that's not normal.
Okay, because I need enough time to move. Because in my vision, in my dream, a hotel was not supposed to be behind my retirement home. Maybe a lake or a stream, because this is gonna be my home to live in. It's gonna be my peace of mind, uh-huh, my quality of life. But when you put a hotel behind my home, and it's not gonna be that much room, you come and see, I don't even know where they're gonna put it, where they're gonna fit this thing. Where are you gonna have room behind a hotel for fire, police, and, uh, first responders to get behind the building in case of emergency? So, you would be right into my backyard. But you don't have to concern yourself with that, because you won't live there. I have to live there.
All right, next.
My name is Jerika Stewart. I also live in Southampton. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. One thing I had a question about, what guarantees do we have? I heard the gentleman talk about, um, awnings, and the True Brand normally does, and, you know, things like that. How do we have guarantees even for something so small that he's not gonna put up big blue and yellow signs? Is his word going to stand? Um, let me say that I don't agree with the hotel going into the neighborhood. Uh, you all live in, what, Whitewater? Is there a hotel or wherever in Fayetteville? There's not a hotel in your neighborhood. So, you're coming to build.
Can you direct to us, please?
Yeah. They're coming to build in a neighborhood that they don't live in. Um, they wouldn't want a hotel in their neighborhood. And they're not really giving guarantees of, you know, he made a pretty statement, and over in Fayetteville, the homes are worth a million dollars. There is no guarantee that our home values are not going to go down. And so, we don't have any guarantees. Just in this meeting, I talked to my husband, and I was like, "We're going to move. So, I'm going to direct to you." But standing, this is to them in the back, you are going to be forcing people out of their homes. You're moving, trying to come into a community where you are literally not wanted. Um, but I guess all you're seeing is a dollar sign. We're seeing our livelihood go down the drain, things that we have worked for. And so, that's where I stand. I do not approve. I don't know what the steps are going to be, as the gentleman before me asked. I'd like to know how long, um, I have to remain in my house before we sell.
Very much. Next.
I have two questions. I want to know, what are you doing to address the infrastructure? Right now, that intersection is already congested at certain times of the day, especially during school season. It's, it's congested, and that, there's only the traffic light on fifty-four. When we come out of our neighborhood, we're dealing with the traffic that's going to Publix. And so, now, if you put a hotel there, I live on Carriage Oaks, so when they're going to want to get to Highway eighty-five, going back in the Cowee way, they're gonna come down Carriage Oaks and go through the back of the neighborhood. So, all of that traffic, Carriage Oaks is, is a lot of traffic on there right now. So, you're adding more traffic to Carriage Oaks. Secondly, you, eighty-four parking spaces. So, what, which you mentioned about the soccer field that they're building here, which mean, if you get eighty-four tenants, then the overflow of that parking, where is it going to end up? Over, across the street? And then, that becomes an is, issue with the, I think, the weight, weight, weight loss center and, um, the restaurant. So, I'm just saying, and it looks like, and maybe I looked at the map wrong, as far as where it's going to be, the entrance is gonna be right there at that corner of Carriage Oaks and wherever Publix is. I didn't see where the exit was. Was there an exit? So, I'm, I, I don't know. I, I just know that you guys need to consider the amount of traffic that we will encounter trying to get in and out of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, Phillip, I'm gonna ask you to address a couple things when we're finished with the public comment. One else? Okay, Phillip. What? Uh, Phillip, the traffic impact, explain to the community how we, to the extent that we have authority, how we measure and mitigate traffic impact.
So, we take a look at, um, we measure traffic by level of service. It's actually the quality rating that we measure traffic. So, level of service is usually, easily ascertained at intersections, whether the intersection's operating at an A to an F level of service. Different uses produce different levels of traffic. We use the Institute of Traffic Engineers, it's American Civil Engineering Institute of Traffic Engineers, I T E, to determine traffic generation and what we call trip generation numbers. Um, if a particular use exceeds trip generation numbers of a particular amount, we usually ask for a traffic study to be performed as a part of the land development process. That is, of course, after this process. This particular development will be required to produce traffic generation, trip generation numbers, uh, for this development, um, as a part of the, the, uh, the planning commission process and the staff review. It's different from a full-blown traffic study. A traffic study requires us to measure, or requires the developer, rather, to measure the impact, the level of service impact on nearby intersections. Hotel generates approximately, uh, approximately point four-nine trips, point-five trips per hotel room. At peak demand, this, at peak hour, which is really how we measure level of service, is at peak AM and peak PM hour, we want to know how many trips are going in the AM and the PM peak hours. What's that impact? For development, so this is this, looking at I T E numbers, staff did kind of preliminary look into, preliminarily look into that, talking about forty trips at peak hour, either AM or PM. That's an average. So, that's approximately point-six trips per minute, um, in the peak hour of traffic, so the highest intensity level in the AM or PM. In aggregate, we would ask the developer to provide us with a much more accurate number, so a much more specific number at that time. But that's how we assess traffic impact. At forty trips, peak hour, that's really not a threshold that we require a traffic study. It's extremely low. Again, if we're measuring that out over the peak hour, we're talking about point-six trips, one, you know, not even a full car trip per minute impacting a particular intersection. There are developments that we do require a traffic impact analysis for, and we've done many of those as well. Those are usually, if they're generating, you know, over twelve-hundred trips or so per day, and we ask for basically a traffic impact analysis, where they show trip distribution, impact on level of service at nearby intersections, um, and even subsequent intersections further down the road.
Secondly, someone asked about, um, color use. Uh, we have, we have approved certain brick, we've approved certain materials. What is your oversight on making sure that it is adhered to?
If these colors are changed, it comes back before you. So, we, I am not actually permitted to let the colors change beyond what has been presented. So, basically, has to be off-white, uh, exactly what was presented to you. The areas that are off-white need to be off-white, the areas that are kind of earth-tone brown or burnt brick, burnt brick, red brick brown that match closely to, um, Publix, he needs to be able to provide that. It needs to match very closely. And if he, if it doesn't, if he comes back before us and he says, "No, I want to do a bright white brick and a bright, or a dark black brick, and we want to do accents in blue," then he basically has to go back a step and go before you again for another certificate of appropriateness approval.
Uh, building inspectors that monitor the process?
Yes, yes.
Anybody else want to ask any questions, Phillip? Phillip? Uh, I believe that's all I didn't hear, that anybody else wanted to speak. Please, if you spoke, please make sure that our, our clerk has a form, uh, for you. And, um, are there any staff comments?
We have one person that missed the.
Somebody else wants to speak?
My name is Carla Johnson. I live in Southampton. And originally, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I will say that I'm expressing my disappointment because when I got the email, it was like we were coming because he was changing from one hotel to another one. And sitting here, it seems like a decision was already made that there was gonna be a hotel, but we're gonna go through a back door, and we're gonna come up with this form here, now they're gonna not be able to say anything, because we're not voting on whether our hotels are zoned. We already know that it was zoned, as you say, but the residents, the people that's affected the most don't want it. And I just tell you, I just, it's very disheartening to know that our voices don't matter, because we're the ones that's being impacted. Like she was saying, I have a small kid. I have two kids, graduated college. I moved to Tyrone for a reason. I relocated here from Seattle. And now, I have another small kid that's in Birch Elementary. And when things happen, it's too late after the fact, because it's not directed to you directly. But will you be able to sleep at night, knowing that something happened, and you're saying, "Wow, these people expressed all this concern, they were saying all this stuff." And we just kind of went, we did it a loophole, we found a loophole, and I'm, you know, he's, that's business, that's what they do. But at the end of the day, the impact that it's making on, because, you know, our voices are heard, and it was always, like you said, the extended stay, the extended stay. So, it's like y'all just then pulled a rug from underneath us and did this old trick. And we sitting here, even though we're speaking, it's still falling on deaf ears, because a decision was already made that it was gonna move forward if they approve this certificate right here. So, that's all I wanted to say. I just, I'm just very disappointed that our voices was not heard.
And I want to, I want to make sure that, I, I'm grateful for that, and I want to, uh, respectfully, I want to make sure that, at least, uh, you understand that it was absolutely not our intent to mislead anyone. The decision on the hotel was made over twenty years ago, period, the allowance of a hotel. So, that, we have no, we have nothing. I don't want a hotel there, but it, I don't, it doesn't matter. Okay? I didn't, that's why I live where I live. I don't live next to a commercial district. Okay? So, that decision was made years ago. So, all we could do now is to try to make it as palatable as possible for our community, by making it look like what's around it, by making it only three stories instead of four stories, by making all of the things we can to make it as, as acceptable as possible. So, in no way did we intend to mislead, and I can promise you that the decision was not even made. I didn't know what the decision was gonna be tonight, so, that means I gotta shut up, right? So, I didn't know what the decision was gonna be, so, it, clearly, we didn't know coming in. I, I can promise you that. Yes, thank you. All right. Someone else?
Yeah. We got two people.
Don't forget to fill out your forms for our clerk, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Christine Noble. I live at two-eleven Brunswick Drive. And like so many other sentiments and things that I've heard tonight, um, it is a little disappointing to hear, you know, some of the things that we've heard. When I moved, when we moved to, um, so, when we moved here to Fayetteville, to Southampton subdivision, you know, it was one of those things where we were excited about it. We, our son was probably in second grade when we moved here. Now, he's graduated from two uni, oh, one university, and he's in law school now. So, when we moved here, we were extremely proud and happy to be a part of the community. And, you know, I used to tease my husband and say, "Oh, I love it here. My neighbors are wonderful. The community." It's like, this is my dream home. And I do believe, and I still feel that way, but when we built that home in two thousand five, if I had known now what I, if I had known then what I know now, we probably wouldn't be here. And, you know, and unfortunately, it's like, I, I know the land is zoned for, you know, a hotel and other, uh, different types of businesses. However, it's, you know, I just never thought that we would have a hotel in front of our subdivision. You know, it's okay, I, I don't have a problem with it, I just have a problem with it being in front of Southampton, where, where we've been here since two thousand five. So, um, I certainly hope that the process does not continue beyond where it is from the architectural standpoint, you know, because if it does, then I, I'll have some soul searching and things to look at and to consider myself, because I, when I moved- things to look at and to consider myself because I, when I moved here, when we moved here, the community was everything that we wanted it to be, that's why we built the home custom to what we wanted it to be, because we felt that this was the right area for us to be. And I know things have grown up and, you know, and I expect that growth and everything, I just don't feel comfortable and have an image of living next to, you know, having a hotel in front of us, it's just not for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Anaya Martin, and I'm a resident of Southampton. My father actually agreed with this, but I'm on the whole other spectrum of this, I did not agree at all. This is actually my first council meeting, and I wanted to know, of course, what was going on in my neighborhood, so I'm here and honestly very disappointed with the decision made, with like a lot of my neighbors said, it feels like the decision was already made. And I grew up in Southampton, I've been here since I was four years old, and I'm twenty-four now, so I've been in this neighborhood, I've got to play with my sisters on the street, I got to play with my neighbors, and I didn't have to deal with any type of violence, crime, or any suspicious people, I got to be free. And even now, I still walk my dog in the neighborhood, I feel safe now, and I feel like with this possibly going through, it could affect how the kids grow up in the neighborhood, and they won't be able to experience what I experienced in Southampton, which I absolutely love, the peace of being able to walk down the street and say hey to my neighbor and know them, because I've grown up with these people. But going down the street and seeing people I have no idea who they are, and I don't know what their intentions are, can be very scary, so, just very disappointed with what's going on now, but this isn't my last council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Are there any staff comments?
I have a few, and I just want to address one thing, it's been said tonight a couple of different ways, but, but not, not, I just want to add some clarity to something. A certificate of appropriateness, what we're hearing, what we heard tonight, is very unique. If the town did not have a certificate of appropriateness requirement on the books, the applicant would have come to staff and said, okay, the zoning exists for a hotel, he would have gone through a different, very different process that did not involve, you know, this meeting. He would have woken up one day, and there would have been bulldozers out there clearing the land, and you'd have said, what's going on? You would have called Town Hall, and we would have said, they're building a hotel. Why? Because it's allowed on, in that zoning. So to say that there was a back door or a loophole, that's just, that's just not it. This is a, as, as established, this is a very unique process to Tyrone, and so the very existence of, of what we did tonight and what we've done over the last year with this applicant, I think establishes that, you know, this is a, you know, this has been a very public process. You know, the zoning was laid out twenty years ago, we're just now, we're lucky that it's just now that someone's wanting to buy and build on that property. So I'm just going to add that as a member of staff, that's, I think that's something that need to be pointed out, that this process, you know, just kind of, like I said, if it weren't for this process, you'd have woken up, waking, awakened one day and some, you know, dirt would have been moving, so. All right, council. Usually this time of year, we're getting ready for public hearings for taxes, for millage rate. Typically, we, we do that by the end of August, we have three public hearings. We've got notification today from the, thank you, the Tax Commissioner, that the Tax Assessor's Office still don't have all their numbers to the Tax Commissioner, so that process is delayed. The messaging was, their goal is to get that information to us by September. So there's going to be an extension, and we don't know at this time, we don't have all the numbers, so we can't possibly put together everything we need for y'all, for what to consider for the millage, what the, what the rollback rate and all that would be. So just, just all that to say, the, the taxation hearings will be delayed this year, and we don't know what those dates are going to be yet, so we'll get those to you. And the last thing I have is, First Friday is tomorrow, it's Ken Scott, the Magic, Magic Show, starting at six at Shamrock Park.
Other staff comments? Right, any council comments?
I actually do have a comment. This is a very difficult process. No, like, coming into these meetings, we do have a lot of information, information is always on the website, we're able to look at it. When the applicant first came before us, he failed to meet the requirements to get the certificate of appropriateness on several occasions. Most of you that I'm seeing were here for those meetings, and you probably heard most of us speak on behalf of someone, an applicant submitting something that was incomplete and that wasn't right, and we denied that application because that's what we were legally and morally obligated to do. When an applicant comes to us with the correct information and everything is how it should be, then the thought process of not approving something that meets a standard is not moral, it's not something that I would, that I teach my kids to do. I have two ten-year-olds that are being raised right here in Tyrone, they know that their dad is above reproach, I'm going to continue to be that way. And I understand that this is an emotional process. I would not want a hotel in front of my house, just like the mayor said. However, we all have property rights, and if you were standing before us and someone was trying to tell you what to do with your property, I would stand right here behind you as well, and I would say, if they are allowed to do that on their property, then we're going to fight tooth and nail for that to happen. If we went the other direction, and let's just say, we said, hey, no, we're not going to allow this to happen, and then he goes to a judge, just like the people before us, then we engage in a lawsuit and then nail every taxpayer in Tyrone, whether they live all the way up there or all the way down there, we're using their money to fight a legal fight that we know that we would actually lose because he has the right to do it once he meets the conditions. And so, you know, it's, it's a tough decision because you know which, you know what you want to do, but then sometimes you have to do what you have to do, you have to do the right thing. And getting through this first part of the process, because he met those conditions, is the right thing. Now whether or not he meets the other standards that he's obligated to meet, I don't know if he's going to meet those standards. But for this particular standard right here, he has met it, we have no choice, we have to do it. I don't feel good about it, I don't. However, I'm going to do what's right all the time, and I've heard some people in the back say things about us taking bribes and, and, and all of that, and, you know, keep your opinion to yourself. You know, that's not what any of us do. And, you know, we have, we have, we have obligations, we have things that we have to submit financially every year to talk about what our bank accounts look like, to be a public servant. And so y'all never have to worry about that, we're legally obligated to do certain things. So with those, those things, you know, I, I feel for you. This is a decision that we had to make. It wasn't made before this meeting, I struggled with it during the meeting. And so I just wanted to share that with you, you know, I know you're going to have your opinion one way or another, but all I can do is to speak my truth.
Any other council comments?
Right, having personal friends in the neighborhood, I, I empathize and sympathize, but as Councilman Hunter has expressed, we have to do what's legal and moral, and sometimes that's really hard, and you, and you may not like us for it, but someday you'll like us for it, when we stand up for your rights, like he was saying, and when we stand up for this town, again, when it, when it's a, when it's crucial, we'll stand up, we will stand up for you to fight when there is a, you know, a chance to win. But this battle was fought when they didn't want Southampton, when they didn't want Publix, that's when this battle was won, for that commercial development. And I would just, and a word of, of advice is, whenever you move, look at your surrounding properties, because that will determine what goes in there. It's, it's not easy to find a piece of property that is isolated from development or that could not be rezoned. So just, you know, keep that in your, in your, back of your mind when you're, when and if you move. I hope you don't move, I hope we've made this palatable, I hope that we've expressed these, these impacts, are, we are trying our best to keep them to a minimum, we love Tyrone, and that's all I'm going to say.
All right, that's all the council comments, I understand there's a need for executive session.
One item for real estate acquisition.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.